Okay, so here we are, the Community Development Committee, June 19th workshop, and we'll start introducing ourselves, starting with Ms. Denzer.
Ellen Denzer, Community Development Director.
Ryan Shirley, District 13.
Jerry Van Zelman, District 18.
Nicole Peterson, Planner, St. Croix County.
John Hilgers, Planner, St. Croix County Community Development.
Brett Budrow, Planning, Land Information Administrator, St. Croix County Community Development.
I'm Dan Hanson, District 12.
Scott Kellner, District 11.
So we'll launch right into our meeting, and who's going to start us out, Ellen?
Um, I will do that. Excuse me, I will do that. So, um, we were, uh, wanted to make sure we got through our next section, so we are moving right into the ag section first tonight, um, so as that, uh, we didn't take the chance of running out of time. And then after that, we will go through an up, uh, report on transportation. And John will be doing some of this with me, um, and then copies of the revised land use and revised natural resources, if you've had any further thoughts, and we'll just kind of point out the changes you requested. And then John has an update on the noise nuisance question from last month, and then any other discussion related to any of these topics you guys want. Okay? So, um, we have before you your Ag Farmland Preservation, Volume 1 through 7, and, um, John or Brett, could either of you kind of get that up on the screen and then, um, also grab the remote and, or the mouse and keep us moving through it for the public? Thank you. So, um, let's start with that. I flipped it over. Uh, goal, so the first page, as staff, we aren't recommending a lot of changes on this first page. For the most part, we feel Goal Number 1 and Goal Number 2 are, um, and also Goal Number 3 are all very well-written, and they're all still appropriate and applicable to our county. Preserving farmland to maintain and grow St. Croix County's agricultural industry and to enhance the rural landscape. Promoting agricultural development to support St. Croix County's producers, businesses, and communities. Guide or manage development patterns that will preserve farmland and promote agricultural development. Objectives related to the first goal, protecting productive soils, supporting public or private initiatives that preserve farmland, minimizing loss and fragmentation of farmland in rural areas. All still very valid objectives. Uh, Goal Number 2, objectives, maintain and strengthen the farm operator's right to farm, support economic incentives, support efforts which increase viability and diversity of agriculture, support agriculture processing and marketing initiatives, local, regional, and global markets, maintain and strengthen the county farm economy, identify, develop, and maintain agricultural infrastructure. So all those first six, um, we did think that the seventh one, we would like to suggest that be eliminated. Um, providing technical assistance to farmers seeking to innovate or modernize their operations really puts us in kind of an awkward position of competing with the private sector. And so, uh, and there's also just been reality of looking back over the past 10 years. How much of that have we been able to do? How much of that have we had a role in, in not finding that we have really a role to play in that? Um, farmers are modernizing based on a lot of factors related to economics, I'm sure, and efficiency, and, and other things, and what, um, new trends there are. So, um, doesn't feel like that's one of our responsibilities to try to stay ahead of some of those factors, so.
We do have the, the dairy, the extension agent with dairy who handles that particular thing, and, but we don't know that that's even going to continue, so I guess.
Well, and we look at this, we, and I think we've mentioned that before, is what is the county's role? And the extension, certainly you support extension financially and with directives and that kind of thing, but I'm not sure that, um, you're actually supporting that level. How, would that be the way? I mean, Ryan's, uh, the person who's the ag producer, and even the crop producer, who, they now have a regional role, both of them, uh, and out of, for a four-county area. And so their role is different than it was 10, very different than it was 10 years ago. And, um, I'm sure that they're looking at it from the standpoint of what the university is finding out in terms of agricultural operations and modernization, and what's happening at various lab farms at Platteville and River Falls and Madison, and so I'm not sure that we have a, I'm not sure what our role is. And if you have a role that you think that the county plays, absolutely, you know, kind of help us write this a little more specific to that role.
So it's, this would be a good place to point out that the county has to, or should, if this is a, an opportunity to talk about the idea, the, the, when we're, when we're doing a comprehensive plan, there's a, there's a fundamental value in the background going on, and the comp, the, the value that we're, that we're building upon isn't, isn't really telling, uh, people what to do in the future. It's, 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 it's really a guideline. We're not telling them what organization to use. We're not saying you will use UW Extension, and you will use, uh, the, the ag agent. Rather, we're, we're giving, we're giving our, our map, our roadmap to the future. We're not giving them, uh, that specific. They were going to tell them what organization needs to be used, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it. And I would, maybe this is a good point to, time to make an overall statement, too. As the rest of, as our staff team looked at this, compared to land use and natural resources, this was a lot longer. This, there's four and a half pages, and the policies in here were extensive, and there are a lot of them. And we were asking ourselves, how much of this have we really had the capacity, the staff, the ability to do? And, um, you're, you're going to see as we go through the rest of these pages, a lot of, um, strikeout, because I think we felt that, looking back, um, there was a lot of feel-good stuff in here, but not accomplishable. And it, it should be a little more realistic as to what we can, what our role can be, given the resources that the county has available to put towards this. So, and some of it, of course, is things we've accomplished already, and that's fine. You're going to see a bunch of that, too, but really, it's really long. And it was kind of like, wow, did we, are we capable of doing all this? And Tim was our Stever, our resource, um, net, Resource Management Administrator, who also, you know, is land and water conservation, and all of the various ag programs that we are involved with in terms of soil and water protection. He went over all this and provided a lot of comments, too.
So, to continue with that thought, where we can refer, we're, we're giving a roadmap for how we grow and, and how we plan to have the county grow in the future. I guess, what I'm trying to say is we, we will direct ourselves, our future selves, uh, without, um, telling them what, what agency or what, um, because there were a lot of times in the, in the past, reading this, that would say, you'll, you'll use such and such agency, you'll, you'll use this federal agency, you'll use this. Instead of telling, instead of telling them utilize, well, we will utilize whatever financing, what other financing agencies are available, because we don't know what financing sources will be available in the future necessarily. There could be new ones coming up, there could be old ones dropping off, but we'll try to make those things available for whatever farmers we can in the future as we see fit. For example, the, uh, best management practices, we don't know what programs will come up. So, I guess that's what I'm saying, is we want to be, we, we want to be specific, but we want to be general, too. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, a great example is, um, cover crops. You know, they've been, the concept has been around for decades, but in the last five, seven years since this document was written, that has become a huge area of focus, and soil health has become a really strong talk, stock, talking point at the, well, state and federal level. And there's a lot more programs focused on soil health, cover crops, et cetera, than there used to be. So, um, yeah, we don't know what direction it'll go in the future, so we need to be flexible.
I'm sorry, did you really?
No, it's fine.
I just, I wanted to, I wanted to do that, um, to talk about the underlying principles of how we're writing this, as much as, as what's, the policies are, but the, the driving principles of what, you know, what's holding this whole thing up, the scaffolding, so to speak, or what the policies are written on, and then to continue on, so that we, I just have a feeling of what the ethic and the, the scaffold, so to speak, is, what, how you, how you go about this. So, thank you for enduring that, sir.
I have a couple of, uh, maybe it's, they're just verbal issues there, here. In 2.3, for instance, support efforts which includes, includes, increase the viability and diversity. You know, in a way, viability and diversity are, can be the same thing, so we can get by with one of those words, trying to shorten it, because Ellen said it is long. Or it should be the viability of diversity, which would be, if something's going to work, if you want to plant mince, for instance, spearmint, is that going to work in St. Croix County? I, I, I think the wording there, viability and diversity is not correct, maybe not saying what we want it to say.
Okay.
What number are you on?
2.3.
Do you have the suggestion, Jerry?
Uh, well, if, if you want to keep both the words viability and diversity in there, I would say of in between, in between instead of and.
Okay.
Because that, that kind of says it better. It's, it's, is this going to work? That, that's what it's saying. And, and that's what other counties in Minnesota, for instance, I know have done. The other one is, um, 2.7, oops, 2.6. Really, the first five objectives say exactly what the 2.6 does without saying exactly that. So we could either replace all of those with 2.6, or leave 2.6 out, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I think those are good points. For instance, I would also suggest for 2.3, that it say, support efforts which increase the viability of agricultural diversity.
Yeah, there, that's right, because this is agricultural.
Yeah. And then, I did think about that. I thought, you know, identify, develop, and maintain. I was thinking about that, um, actually, when I was reading these over earlier, that how do we, as a county agency, develop or maintain agricultural infrastructure, except when it comes to the road system, you know? Um, after the road system, there's not a lot of agricultural infrastructure that we actually would develop or maintain. You know, um, some of the other ones talk about research, natural resources, like water, there's a lot of water in agriculture, soils, that kind of thing, protecting them. Um, there's obviously the opportunity for bus, related businesses, but I don't know about maintain. So, uh, your suggestion about, um, 2.6 is probably a good one, from that point of view. Other thoughts? Okay. Sounds good.
So, we're removing 2.6?
Yep, and we're changing the order of the words a little bit on 2.3. Okay? Any other thoughts on the Goal Number 2 and its objectives? So, going to Goal Number 3, objective first three, guiding development into areas consistent with the community's willingness and ability to accommodate growth, and that's trying to recognize local planning and local act, uh, ordinances, that kind of thing. Guiding rural development to locations that will not convert productive ag land. Um, there, it's guide. You can see the word guide, because we recognize that, um, that's our role, if any, and, um, you know, you can talk about other things, there may be, there are stronger tools, but even if they are stronger than what we do right now, there still would be guiding. Encouraging conservation design, that's an opportunity to productive, to protect ag land. And then we edited Number 4, 3.4, a little bit. Um, as you can see, um, non-agriculture, commercial, industrial uses that are not compatible with preservation of farmland and ag development. And if you go back to, um, the survey, there was definitely support for, throughout, for a variety of reasons. The, as we noted in the ag, in the land use section, and in the natural resources section, that commercial and industrial uses should be at those commercial nodes, where they have the, in, the infrastructure to support them, where they have, um, co-located for convenience of the public, and, um, certainly out there on those more higher-level highways, and, uh, the locations that really are serving the public. So, that just kind of supports that, I think, in, from the different, from the other aspect of not having it be incompatible with agriculture. Okay. Flipping over to Goal Number 4, next page. Oh, go ahead if you have a question. Oh.
I, I have a question again on, uh, explain 3.2, would you please?
Guide rural development to locations that will not convert productive agricultural land. So, when we aren't enforcing anything, we're guiding, and what we're talking about, um, is basically tying that to that lease system that we talk about later in this document, the land evaluation site assessment, and basically also tying it to the areas that are, um, in green, hope, that are available for farmland preservation zoning, and thinking that those are our most productive farmlands, or they're the lands that are the most, um, likely to stay in agriculture long-term, because the other factors are all relate to either highway infrastructure, um, development levels that are already in those communities. Uh, the other site assessment factors are adjacency to cities and villages, um, natural resources that perhaps they're not com, as compatible with, you know, agricultural use is not. Also relates to their, a factor in the site assessment is also local, um, uh, plans and/or subdivision restrictions, et cetera, that we talked about back in, um, was it April? Yeah, April, our very first meeting, workshop, work session, excuse me. So, it means trying to encourage those communities to adopt, at least in some parts of their communities, farmland preservation, which would help to preserve agricultural, productive agricultural lands. That's what it means. Uh, Brett, do you have anything else thoughts on?
Well, I was going to say, that map there, um, the green is the farmland preservation area, so that's eligible for zoning. The white isn't farmland preservation area, so you would, could say that we're guiding development to those areas through that policy, which then doesn't allow farmland zoning.
Okay, so are we really, is, is what we're trying to say is that, not that we will not convert productive land, but we're promoting unproductive land?
For, no.
Yes.
Yeah, we could.
So.
Less, less, not un, less productive.
Okay, yeah.
It's not unproductive land, it's just land that's being used for a different purpose. But we're trying to leave farmland in farm production.
Right, but there's a lot of unproductive farmland, or less productive farmland. And there's a lot of it. That's what we should be promoting, and let the good farmland be good farmland, because that should be in the ag, ag business.
So a person who's not a farmer, or an ag, an ag-oriented, or a person who's not thinking with an ag vision, isn't, is going to look at unproductive as a negative term? Instead of an opportunity to develop. So I'm trying to think of a way to say that, that, that a person who's not used to agricultural language is going to see that as, as a positive thing. Good, unproductive land, boy, a place to build, you know, I mean, uh, we want to attract people who want to build here. We don't want them to see the word unproductive and think they should go to Minnesota or someplace.
Right.
Get what I'm saying?
Yeah, but, but, so that's why I'm saying, let's not say, we're not going to, let's say we're going to promote that land.
Promote, promote.
Less, I, I think Ellen had a good point, less productive land. You know, for instance, farmland around Richmond's a lot more productive than farmland around Emerald. Let's promote growth in Emerald or wherever.
But we have to also be realistic. Emerald has had a, has not adopted any kind of ag protection in, ever, and they don't have much development, because the reality is, there are other factors. Road systems, jobs, distance to jobs. You, um, you can try to push development in one direction, and was mentioned the last time, that, you know, if we had broadband in more areas, perhaps more people would decide to live in those less productive areas. Um, it might be true. Broadband's a whole new factor that could really change the, uh, landscape, but historically, it's been about roads and convenience, no matter what we try to tell the public. And there's lots of very productive farmland on the west end of the county that has been bought up and converted to residential, because it's in the location where people want to live.
That's my point. Um, that, that's right. So when I hear there's, there's a thousand acres of very good land in, in Richmond, uh, area, that's going to be, go under a, a solar array, I think, no, that shouldn't be there. That should be, a lot of other places that are not productive land like that land is. People drive past, farmers drive past that land and drool. Now they're going to cry, because that's a lot. And, and, so that's my point, that, that we should write something here, or include something that we, we promote using less.
A lot of factors, a lot of factors that go into that, the market.
Right, but we create the market. You know, the market is, is really created as to where people on the, you know, that, that's, that's what developers do, right? Isn't that, you pick a piece of land, and they develop, and they, they do whatever it takes to get people to move in, and then that breeds the next piece of land, and the next piece of land.
We're at the developers, though, we're the government.
No, 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 but, but we're, but we are the ones that, that can, can push that kind of thing, rather than nice land, good land, productive land.
Okay, we, yeah. Doesn't, doesn't the, um, alternative energy people have, uh, certain protections under state law? That, when they say we want this piece of land, don't they have some kind of a priority under state law?
Yeah, we can't turn them down. The county can't. We can, the only way you can turn them down under state law is if you can show a direct threat to health, safety, and welfare. And, um, so far, I don't believe there's any place in the state of Wisconsin that's been able to say no. I don't know why. Um, Jerry, I, I can't answer why there's a solar farm in Richmond, and there's going to be a solar farm in, uh, Cylon, Emerald, up in that kind of corner up of the land up there. And Cylon, maybe Emerald doesn't have the greatest farmland, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, but Cylon has very good farmland. Why is it up those places? Because that's where the farmers are who want to get into that program.
It's called greenwashing.
And we, even, there were farmers that called me up, and probably other members of my staff from Cylon, and said, how can we stop this? And I said, well, the county can't. And they said, well, it's in farmland preservation. It's in the green area, and it's already zoned in farmland preservation. And I was not, I was, said, well, that's been asked by other counties in this state, and we've been told that Department of Ag Trade and Consumer Protection has ruled that, um, alternative energy is an agricultural use.
Well, also, there are other, other counties in Wisconsin that are working on the state of Wisconsin, Wisconsin, to change it and return the power to them for any size solar array.
Yes, there are.
So my hope is that that would happen.
Yes.
And, and that's why I was thinking that if we're going to write something into it, we should think about writing something into it.
Yes, and we could be supportive of that, if you want, if you as a board wanted to. Um, I, I don't, I will, we can write in anything you guys is, want to, right, I was, to write in. It's, I don't disagree with your points, you're making excellent points. There's beautiful farmland, and there's some communities, you know, down here in Troy, that has tried to preserve their most productive farmland, and, and it actually is in farmland preservation. There are others, Town of Hammond, um, acre for acre, Town of Hammond has the highest productivity of a whole town in St. Croix County. There are pockets that have higher productivity, but for a whole town, it, it has the highest. Not one acre is zoned either of the ag districts, the town does not want it.
The Town of Richmond on that map is all white. Um, their town plan excludes farmland preservation areas as well, and farmland preservation zoning. Now, that doesn't mean that some of these other policies don't apply when we're looking at subdivisions and things like that, because we do have other ordinances when we do want to work with subdivisions and individual CSMs, you know? We have some policies where we talk about promoting that development on the wooded hillside, and those are the areas that people prefer to build on anyways, where they have those amenities.
And, you know, when you look back at our survey, the majority of citizens do want the preservation of agricultural land. I can't tell you how to balance that with the fact that it's not being preserved. I, I can't tell you why that, other than it, it's not happening. Um, maybe it feels like there's so much of it out there. Maybe it feels like it's, uh, somewhere else, but not here. You know, the not, not, not by me, preserve somebody else's, but not mine. I, I can't tell you that. There's no, uh, other than it's a beautiful area to live, and a lot of people want to live right in the middle of farm country. Um, they want you to somehow allow development, but stop the next guy from developing, and that's not usually realistic.
So Jerry, what are you suggesting?
Well, maybe it's going to take just some more thought, a, a thought process of, of guiding this, of, of, again, promoting the less productive land. And, and how that's, how we can do that, I guess, would take a bit more time than what we're going to have tonight, but I, I think that should be, this shouldn't be cast in concrete, so that can't come later if, if we work on it.
I'm, I'm thinking, I don't want to completely go against the state law, because it's, you're just beating your forehead against a wall. I think maybe we handle it the way we've handled other things. We make a resolution, send it to other counties, we do this, we write our comprehensive plan according to state law, and then if, if the state changes the law, we can modify our comprehensive plan. I think that's probably the best course of action.
Yeah, as long as that's an option, we can. Can we change this comprehen, this comprehensive? I mean, we change it every 10 years, or can we change it if we find, something else comes up that's better? John, you can answer that.
Yes, you can change it as frequently as you'd like, depending on issues that come up, different policies that you want to discuss. You can amend your plan at any time.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and, and you could take a stronger role. You know, you could create, um, areas, you know, rezoning in this county, or in this state, I should say, can be initiated by the property owner, it can be initiated by the town, and it can be initiated by the county board. Any one of those levels have the right to initiate rezoning. I'll just say something radical, because it's never been done here, but you could pick the most productive land in the Town of Hammond and say that the county is rezoning it into an ag preservation district. You could do that at the county level. There's not been the political interest in doing that historically here.
I don't think we'd ever want to do that.
Well, exactly. I, that's what I'm saying, trying to put it very carefully, that there's not been the political interest. I don't know that there would ever be the political interest, but it, that it comes so far historically here, it has come from the towns or the individual property owners. And that's fine, that's, but it doesn't always result in, as Jerry points out, s, some of the better, uh, of reaching the things that you might be really smart, protect their, protect our ag base, allow development around our cities and villages, along our major highways, but there's lots of areas that are very productive, that wouldn't have to be impacted, allow some productive land, and then, you know, there's a balance you could try to find. You have to think about what is a realistic group of policies, so.
There are a couple of policies that kind of speak to what you're saying, maybe 3.9, 76, older commercial and industrial uses clearly related to agricultural production should be allowed in the farmland preservation area, wherever in respect the town will support it. So, you know, what is clearly, but again, that's a state law thing that we'd be struggling against. And then 3.14, the county limits the locations on some of the agricultural and industrial land uses that are related to agricultural production, it's not just state and previous law kinds of,
And as long as we're talking about it, you know, the whole, the other statement right after it, conservation site design, again, 3.10, that serves as a buffer, so then that you can, you could demark. buffer. So then that you can, you could demark by use of wherever we do have farmland zoning, ag one or ag two, that those are, you know, that transition where there's some conservation site design, where there's some preservation of some open space. Open space can be agriculture or trees and, and woods and it can be a combination. And that can help have a transition zone. Private efforts, you know, we have a, it used to be called Wisconsin Farmland Trust, but now it has a different name, but there is out of the Menominee-O'Clare area and they have helped to do some preservation of agriculture in this county. There've been a few interested property owners. So, and sometimes they need us a letter of support from the county and we provided that whenever that has happened. So, there are tools in here that were acceptable 10 years ago, so.
Do we have a list of definitions? So, is there a definition of commercial and industrial listed separately so that we, or are we to know what commercial and industrial mean? And I'm, I'm having a problem in my own city with, with regard to another matter. And it's something that we've gone through in the county and I don't want to bring it up and rehash it here in this meeting, but I'd really like to see us not, I'd like to see us define our terms well, so that we know what commercial is and what industrial is. We have that in the zoning, right? Do we know what that is?
Commercial and industrial is the list of uses that's created in our zoning ordinance in ours, commercial districts and our industrial districts. And it is subject to change and those, all those uses. This, this is again, policy, high level. And then the zoning ordinance is implementation, specific, detailed in the extreme.
Very good. Yep, that's perfect.
Regulatory, yes. Yeah.
And we do have commercial and industrial land uses in the land use section of the Plan Two that are more policy based.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, it's interesting that commercial and industrial comes up in there, but not residential, which, which takes the same amount of farmland, you know?
Yep.
That, that, that's one of those things that really should be clarified. So it's, it's this, this and that. And they're all inclusive or they're not?
And maybe that is exactly what, Jerry, if you think about it over the next, the course of this meeting, or even perhaps between now and the next meeting, that what would be, what the, what should be said? Because the objectives are at the, again, higher level. Rural development could be rural ag, rural commercial, rural residential. Whereas as we get into the policies, maybe there's a few policies specific to residential that you'd like to suggest, even just for discussion, you know? Sometimes I throw out some radical comments here because I hope that it will give you an opportunity to think, no, I don't want to go there. Or, yeah, let's think about that a little more. Whichever way you feel that is appropriate. And then you can decide how, you know, hey, do we want to change our thinking at all? Or do we want to maintain the status quo? Or do we want to go back a little bit, back away from it even? Some more. So, it's up to you guys. And then, of course, it'll be up to the full county board. So, number three point two, Jerry, we'll kind of, as staff, I don't think we're going to have anything real specific, but we, I've definitely got a note that we should think about that and see if we can perhaps come back with some suggestions that might be helpful based on your comments. Yep. So, the next page, page seven dash four, goal four, conserve availability and quality of natural resources. Again, as I kind of mentioned a little earlier, groundwater is used, surface water, quality and quantity is impacted. So those are combined, you know, basically the conservation and the quality and quantity of those two resources. Farming and forestry operations, best management practices, good stewardship principles. And of course, we can think about stewardship as going all the way back to after the Dust Bowl era of the 30s where poor farming practices caused loss of a lot of soil and a lot of problems for agriculture. And since then, we've found a lot of education and tools and management practices that can prevent a lot of problems. So this is very, again, very high level. Number four point three, we edited a little bit, prevent soil loss. Again, mentioning that that and soil productivity are very high level at the, or high focus items at this point in time. Encouraging establishment and maintenance of ag crops and pastures for ag land adjacent to public habitat. Part of the reason we, that one is in there is because they are much more compatible and we do have a lot of public habitat owned between U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Wisconsin DNR. And so those areas are very popular in our county. We have a lot of public hunting ground for different things, waterfowl, deer, even, I don't know that much about hunting myself, but I know there's other opportunities for hunting pheasants. It's pretty big. So, if agriculture has adjacency, usually there's a little bit left from the product, from harvesting that can really make a difference in keeping our wildlife healthy and available for recreation, hunting. So, we encourage it. That usually happens when they're working with individual farmers, not as a broad policy activity of the county board. So, moving into policies, you'll notice, as we've seen with all of these, that like the one point ones relate to goal one, two point somethings relate to goal two, et cetera. So, a few changes on this page. The land evaluation site assessment system kind of goes back to a lot of what went into the farmland preservation plan and, and still is being used. And we've talked a little bit about tweaking it, but we do think that it's still very applicable when it comes to productivity of land and soils and also site assessment factors we developed. Land planning for development, local comp plans. If, and that's a good example of that is Richmond and also parts of Star Prairie and Somerset and all those. They are not shown as green on this plan because they were planned for development by those communities. And so therefore, they are not shown and so they are not eligible for the farmland preservation program. And that, putting it in this plan helped make it very clear to those communities that that's the way it worked. And that was trying to support their plans, but yet also recognize that's where they want development to go. Farm, maintaining a farmland preservation plan and ordinance, which we have done. Encourage the use of farmland preservation program as a tool, going back to what we've said over and over again, maintaining farmland preservation area consistent with chapter ninety-one. And we've edited that a bit, go away from what we had as a composite score for LISA. Again, we want to be able to flexible to change that if we need to. And one of the programs out there, the PACE program, is really no longer funded by the state or promoted. The one point seven, we recommended deleting because we really don't need new districts. We've created those and they are not that old. So, it's been working pretty well. They were done in about 2013. The next one is just changed to continue to because we already have four or five AEAs in the county, moving, removing the PACE program. And when we say support that, it's because they do need county board support to create an AEA. If any of you recall, I believe it was last year or the year before that we had a new AEA created in the county and the county board did adopt a resolution of support.
What is an AEA?
An ag enterprise area. It says it right in here, under one point six, ag enterprise area.
Right. And what, is that a legal definition?
Yep. There's a state definition. It's an area that has to be in, it has to have a certain number of farmers, a certain number of acres, and it has to meet a certain level of productivity. And then it also is eligible for, usually it has to be in the farmland preservation program and in one of the two state recognized ag districts that we have in our county. And then it becomes eligible for not just the base farmland preservation tax credit program, but for a bonus tax credit program. For instance, in our county, the whole town of Rush River, almost, except for a few white spots, is in an AEA. There is an AEA in Star Prairie.
Still?
Yes, they don't go away. Once they're created, they're there.
In the mean section up at the top of the map. I was worried after Harland died that it would not be qualified because there was only five in it.
No, because there's also land in Polk County.
It's that one right up on the north border.
Mm-hmm.
It's all of this in here, then this goes up into Polk County. Harland is in a, that's his property. He, he wasn't in an AEA though.
Okay.
Yeah. The, the one that you created last, helped create last year is to, is in Stanton. And it takes up a huge part of Stanton. So, not all of the green, but a lot of it. There's another couple.
Troy has one.
Troy, thank you. And that's one, two, three, four. I believe that the one in Somerset is also part of the Star Prairie one. The land in Somerset, it's all one area. I thought there was one more. Might be a s-
Springfield or there was one down in there someplace.
Yep. So I think there's one more.
Some of these still have heresies.
Absolutely. And it's a very good opportunity for farmers who want to support each other and work together.
Also get the best tax. There's something about their incentives and things that they get too, that if they're in the AEA, they get additional incentives that they're not eligible just in the A.
Yeah, I believe the numbers change a little bit, but it goes from seven dollars an acre to 10 dollars an acre, I believe, by staying in the AEA.
So, is this something the guys, the people at, like, Farm Bureau and Farmers Union, do they, they know all about this and everybody's aware of it? Why would they not do it?
Because if you get into it, you're expected to stay in it for a minimum number of years. And property owners may have the, may wish the flexibility of changing their minds.
Yeah. It's kind of like a payback program, almost like the forestry where you're locked into it for so many years. And if you decide later, well, I want to develop my property and I want to do something different, and there's paybacks after they get it.
Yeah.
And our staff helped a lot, setting them up, the Stanton one. We had staff and research management that spent a lot of time with the landlords in Stanton, working with them and working with folks from the state to create the Stanton.
This is one question I have on this. You know, we talked earlier about the way that we're setting ours up here is, is, for instance, the town of Star Prairie is mostly all white. There is some AEA areas that go off with productive farmland, but for the most part, township's attitude towards farmland preservation was less because they're looking at potential development for the future. Yet, on the other side, they're the only township that's in that type of situation that decided to still do R1 versus R2. Somerset, St. Joe, Richmond, all did, all R2, has no R1.
Correct.
So, so is that an issue that the town boards aren't really on board as to what this does or what this could do? I mean, the farmers might hear it, but the town board members aren't necessarily farmers.
As far as the-
Right, but the AEA and that, yeah.
I think generally they do, they have in the past. And I think it goes back to the early 1980s, I believe, from the first farmland preservation plan. And that was pretty well publicized and decisions were made at that point, one way or the other. And that momentum has just carried forward generally for the last forty years.
Has it not changed much, the amount of land that's in that? Has it just not changed a whole lot over those forty years?
In the zoning category, not really.
Not really.
Other than there was land in St. Joe, Somerset, and Star Prairie, there was more land zoning and agriculture.
St. Joseph was, huge amounts of land in agriculture. It's all come out. Most of Somerset's come out. We could point out that, for instance, all of Somerset was going to be out back in about 2012 when we did this. And the property owners in those green areas came forward and said, no, we want in. And so we had to go back and work on our farmland preservation plan document here. And we grabbed some extra land, a little bit, not much, to support them in case they bought up some land in the adjoining area. And I think actually since then, one of the two farmers in Somerset has bought a piece of land that was ineligible and was disappointed he couldn't add it to the farmland preservation. But your town board has to support this, you know? And they understand it. They really do. They know what they want. I guess that'd be the best way to say it.
I know when I was chairman for the St. Craig County Towns Association, many meetings were spent giving, you know, updating so that the members could, for when we, when we would have meetings, we had at least thirty to forty town leaders that would show up to it. And that was a really big topic because at the time, the ag enterprise areas, they'd just come out. I think about, was that the early, like, 2005, 2010?
Yeah. I think it was around 2008, nine, 10. It was after we got done with your plan, which was 2006. And after we got done with the next round of plans, you know, Star Prairie, Richmonds, which was about 2007. So, yeah. And towns struggle. I've told more than one person this story, but I would go to the town of Richmond, working on their comp plan and, and the plan commission one night, yep, we just got to protect agriculture. We want to do this. Come back a month later, nah, we're going to go away from it. Go back the next month, no, we got to protect agriculture. Go back the next, I mean, I changed that damn plan. I was like, please, just make a decision. I can't take it. Changing it for them.
Any other questions about AEAs?
Sorry.
Moving on then. One ten, talking about three-party agreements, you've got one example, land trust, government, and landowner. Are there any other examples?
There could be, you know, private trusts, you know, property owner trusts, that kind of thing. Land trust is, or obviously a nonprofit organization. There's, could be town, could be also co-ops, like the, if that was, I don't know that a co-op would ever really agree to do it, but there could be, you know? There might be, I don't know that I've ever heard Farm Bureau or Farmers Union had an interest in it. But certainly, if they did, usually it's some, something local. But three-party agreements provide just, it's a little better than two-party agreements. Obviously, you can have a split vote and then you can't do anything. Three-party gives you the opportunity to maybe make something happen, change if you, if the group feels that change is needed.
How much farmland do we have in this kind of arrangement right now in the county?
Down in the town of Troy, they have pieces of farmland in programs under their conservation, their version of conservation design. But they have all two-party agreements, the town and the property owner. They don't have any three-party. They've never used that. There are a few parcels throughout the county that have gone through, again, what used to be Farmland Trust out of the Menominee area. And it's now changed, I'm afraid I can't think of their current name, but I think it's Western Wisconsin Land Trust, yeah. And there's a few, especially when it came to some farmers that converted their land to prairie. There's a half a dozen of them throughout the county in different locations. Brett, are you aware in looking at our database if there's more?
No.
Yeah, I don't think there's a lot more than that myself.
Cool. And then, do we have a formal process for legislative updates? Or is it just, it's kind of a, is that just a common sense kind of thing to throw in here?
I think it preserves the opportunity in, like what Jerry was bringing up, that if you would like to weigh in on something like alternative energy being recognized as agriculture versus not, and legislatures refers, could refer to state or federal. It doesn't have any limitation that way.
There's also some state movement right now to increase the money for farmland preservation zoning and for AEAs. Because that hasn't been adjusted sometime.
Number one point twelve- Number one point twelve is done already. We did do that. It's complete. One point thirteen has also been completed, so those are off. Then the support and promote agriculture, two point. You can see throughout here, we did eliminate quite a few items. Suggest keeping the, trying to find ways to promote non-agricultural uses when considering conflicts. And we're trying to favor existing land uses. A notification ordinance, I don't think, we just didn't ever found any time, and we've never seen an example of it, to my knowledge. The state right to farm law is promoted pretty heavily by the state. Seems like that perhaps is a better route. We do have a rural living guide. We updated it two or three times. And recent years, we haven't had the staff time to update it again, but we've pulled that document out and feel that it should be updated again. It was very, very popular when we were using it more heavily, so. Kind of go back to that. The idea of having a master naturalist program, while attractive, it had, in the past ten years, it's never been created. I don't know of any other counties that have one. We felt that, again, perhaps overreach of things that we could actually accomplish. So, we recommend removing it, promoting, or we changed promote to explore. Social media opportunities, other ways to do education, and we still want to keep doing, try to do that. There's more opportunities now with our Public Information Officer, Adam, and our, and various better tools we have through our website. So, those opportunities will, are something that the department has tried to do, has been trying to pick up on and start doing. Again, it goes back to kind of number two point five and two point six are really focused on the same thing, education, you know. Little more specific in two point six. This relates to, number two point seven relates to something Brett mentioned and also Scott mentioned, that if you are in use value or in some of the other programs, like the AEA, and you are getting funding from the state, then sometimes you have to pay it back. And our town assessors and the county treasurer are actually charged with making sure that they collect if people convert land out of a program like farmland ag one or ag two and have been collecting, then they have to pay back taxes. Not back taxes, they have to pay back some of the- Yeah, I am, sorry. Oh, this one is about taxes. There's another one where they pay something else back.
They got out of zoning or the AEA, and they have to pay that back, I think, to the state as well.
Yeah. Okay, so if there's more questions on that, Brett would be happy to address them. Where was I? Let's see. Then the next couple, two point eight, two point nine, again, we've, this was a, you know, what do we use that money for? And again, we don't really have the money coming to us, and the county prefers to see it go into the general fund, so take that out. Financial incentives, those are state programs. Supporting those programs is not really something that we have much of a role in. The state offers both beginning farmer and farm succession programs. And I think that they're probably better, obviously, our staff would tell people about them, but I don't know how the county as a whole would support them, other than through any kind of advocacy. And we have, I don't think it needs to be restated. We don't think it needs to be restated, excuse me. Two point ten, we tried to edit the bioenergy to make it on-farm, which is a change we have made in our zoning ordinance to reflect what seems to be a consistent message from the public, that it should be on-farm.
I got a question about community-supported agriculture first, and then I'd like to ask about that. What is community-supported agriculture?
Generally speaking, it refers to when, or there are several of them in St. Craig County, where farming is going on and people are buying shares in the crop. And then they share in the work, and they also share in the produce.
Sure, sure. We're talking about Mike and Jody Lenz?
Yes, that's a good example, yep.
Wonderful, okay.
That's what it is.
So, going back to this bioenergy production, are we talking about wind and solar? Or are we talking about the digester thing?
All, yes, all three.
And in our zoning, are we limiting, or do we have a limitation, especially in the digester, to just the use of the quantity of manure from the production of the farm, or just nearby farms? Or are we exposing ourselves to this notion of bringing in a quantity of manure from a hundred miles away? Like they, they had been talking about?
John is flipping to our exact standards and can see right now, and he'll answer that question more thoroughly.
One moment.
While he's looking, I have a question. Bioenergy really is a wind or solar, though, right? Bioenergy is taking a byproduct and turning it into energy. So, that would, that would strictly be manure, soybeans for diesel fuel, that kind of thing. So, so that on-farm wouldn't be, would not be energy such as solar or-
So, we are, we are limiting that use to the industrial district as a conditional use. So, it's no longer allowed in the ag districts, the commercial biodigesters. The on-farm biodigesters are allowed in the ag districts, but those are related to individual farms. And I think the overriding concern we had when we amended the ordinance was the byproducts of the bioenergy processing, well, the process. You know, you get the solids, the phosphorus, the nitrates, and, you know, all the applications we followed throughout the county, I should say, our natural resource staff, they really had no plan identified as to what they were going to do with that waste. Were they taking it out of the county? Were they going to apply it in St. Craig County that is already high in phosphorus and nitrate?
And what would you do with it in the winter? There seems to be no plan for what to do with this in the winter, because they would continue to digest during the winter and no place to spread it.
Well, the, the reality is, even though it wasn't always said, maybe perhaps in the clearest possible language, but every farmer who has a pit where the rust goes in, then it goes away to the digester, and then it has to come back into that pit. But in the winter, they really are being told, as a farmer, you need to build a second pit. That's what the reality is. That kind of never really was said bluntly, but that's the truth. They had, because you can't hold that much waste. Farmers are actually designed their pits with a certain amount of excess, but they rarely, if ever, build. Tim Steber just said this the other day to me, we were talking about exactly this issue. They rarely, if ever, want to spend the extra money to build very much extra capacity in. And so, they build the minimum extra capacity required under the state law, which makes sense. Everybody's got financial investment, and it's expensive, and so that's what they do. But if they're, if it's coming back, you still have to hold it somewhere. Or it has to be held at the, for a while, at the operation. But they have generally, historically suggested, in the various ones we've looked at, and we only really had reviewed one particular one, obviously. But they've always suggested that they wanted it to be, the truck comes in and unloads, and then takes something else right back to the farm, so that there would be a continuous loop, which you, there's no way around it. The farmer has to add more capacity.
I'd just like to make sure that our comprehensive plan and our zoning dovetail to avoid the eventuality of bringing in all of the turkey manure from another county and doubling the amount of manure that's already in St. Craig County with no place to put it, especially in the winter. But it's a nightmare.
Well, I think what you're suggesting is that we have a policy related to animal waste that goes beyond the areas that the county directly regulates.
Actually regulate, if, if manure is produced in St. Craig County, and the agribusiness people who are doing business in St. Craig County are, are meeting all of the requirements set forth by DAC cap and the DNR, and we're working with them, that's legitimate. But then bringing in the waste from another county, that needs to be, that needs to be something that we actually regulate, because we don't need to allow that.
I, I think you made a good point there. A true on-farm bioenergy production makes use of just about everything. I mean, they dry what's left after they boil the methane gas off and use that. Then the rest of the product is squeezed and washed, and it goes on the field as fertilizer. It's sold to the public as fertilizer. But the only thing that's left is the water, and if that's treated, that, that goes back out. So, so I think we're doing the right thing, making sure that it's on the farm, because that's the place it comes from, that's the place it goes back to, and it's right there. So, so I think that, that part is very good.
Produced at home, used at home.
Yep, and benefits at home. The benefits of that bedding cattle with the, it's hard to believe, but if you've ever seen it, I was part of that, about three or four of those large situations, but in a previous life, that aren't running anymore because methane gas is terribly, terribly corrosive, and it's, there's not really a good way to use it yet.
Sulfur dioxide in the refining process is terrible, and it just falls down to the ground and then-
It never gets to the ground. It doesn't get past the piston rings on the engine.
It's awful.
So, but, but when it does work, what comes out of it is amazing and amazingly useful. But it has to be on the farm, because that's where it comes from. That's where it has to go.
There's a couple of good examples in Dane County, where they pipe it from a couple, a couple of dairy farms to the digester, and then they send the methane back where they generate electricity for the farms themselves. Beautiful operation. I'd love to see it here, if we could pull it off, but-
And that, those in Dane County, though, are owned by Dane County.
Yeah. Well, folks, we're the government, not the developer.
That means that they are making sure it operates, and they have extra money to keep it compliant.
If you knew a guy who understood the electric business.
There's two systems, there's two systems I know of that have been really successful with that. Over the past, one, the Mason Dixon Farm, they actually support, they've got, I think they run about five thousand head at that location, but they, their digester system there runs four Caterpillar diesel generators that actually supports the full electricity for a community of three thousand off from that one farm. Another thing that you're bringing up as far as, you know, once they're done with the product, the, and it's been processed through the digester, there is that issue. But the, the actual, what they pull out of it, actually it's respread, and it's actually a very high-quality fertilizer that they're putting out. And they do use, I mean, one of their byproducts, they use that, the stuff you were talking about, the dry matter. They actually have a company that they work with that they ship it to, and they take it and they form it with resin into what they call shitheads. And they, they have different public people and things that they'll make these of and sell them.
Oh, gosh.
Nationwide. But anyway, this, so it's all in much, you know, how you use it. But the other, the other place that, that does this is, the city of Milwaukee has been since 1926. They produce something that's called Malorganite, which is, it's kind of, it's a combination in their title, Milwaukee Organic and Nitrate. That's how they made that. So, and that's been around since 1926. Now, there's issues coming up with that, that there may be PFAS in that. But, but anyway, the, the deal is, is that if you do it right and you have the right things going on, it can be a very good way to handle difficult issues that we have to deal with.
My point is that I would like to see our zoning and our comprehensive plan reflect that we only handle, I don't want to see the word digester turn into a swear word. I'd like to see, but I would like to see the amount of nutrient from St. Craig County be the amount of nutrient digested in St. Craig County, and the amount of digestate be limited to the amount of material that goes into the digester, that we're, that we're using the amount of stuff that's already in St. Craig County. We're not importing it. That's what I, that's what I'm, I don't want to have a problem of importing stuff and then having too much digestate going onto the fields and causing trouble with our groundwater.
So, we wish to support local use of local products and perhaps close loop systems. I don't know if you've heard that term, but it's, it's that concept of using locally used products and closing the system, closing the loop.
That, that would be- That might be a good way of putting it. A great way of putting it.
Yep, that's very good terminology.
How, how does the committee feel about that as far as giving guidance? You're getting thumbs up. Thank you. All right, can we move on?
Absolutely. I guess, here, here. So, two point eleven, multiple zoning districts. We already, related to agriculture, already has been created. Maintain our networking with farmer-led councils, ag producer organizations, farmers market for specialty crops, et cetera. And continue our educational and promotional events or activities such as Farm City Days. So, we edited that a little bit to make it current, and we have had, we have actually, we had the first farmer-led council in the state. It's an idea that was borrowed from Iowa, and we how have, we believe, at five, more farmer-led councils than any other county in the state, so, which is a very good thing. It's the idea of farmers educating farmers and farmers taking the lead and deciding what they want to do to help keep agriculture going in the county. No changes to being, having zoning adapt. We all think that's a great idea. Continue to do what we've been doing. Relates very directly to what this discussion we just had about biodigesters, which is something that has really taken off in recent decades, so. Next couple, there's, basically, we recommended deleting them. Implementing economic development programs that support agriculture and related businesses. We're not really aware of anything specific, that's specific to agriculture. And we're not sure that that's our role. It feels like it's more economic development corporation's role. So, kind of suggested that one, move on. Encouraging bioenergy production to diversify energy sources. Felt like it was already kind of covered in the other statement, keeping it on-farm. And the next one, two point sixteen, basically suggesting supporting state programs, encouraging young farmers and other related professions. Keep that, but not, but changing the wording a little bit, because a lot of it has moved on to other ag-related professions. Any thoughts on those, please let me know. Turning it over, seven point, page seven point six. So, again, construction and maintenance of the physical infrastructure that supports agriculture. High-speed telecommunications, we could call it broadband. I'm not sure if that's, terminology should change. The utility grid out there, obviously, rail and roads. Also, continue to develop or support electronic and print publications such as the Rural Living Guide. We did take off the Farm Fresh Atlas and the W extension newsletter. Neither one of those exist anymore. So, if you guys know of something else, they have, there is a, sometimes there has been farmers' market documents printed up out of regional planning. But I'm not sure that they're consistently still doing that. So, just having one example.
Could we, could we consider not having a specific at all?
Okay.
Rather say that the county will, something along the lines of the county will be committed to communications, and then state the purpose. The county will be committed to communications for the purpose of, you know, what is the purpose? The purpose is strengthening the agricultural community. County will be committed to contributing to or participating in communications or electronic communications to, however you want to put that. But those guides and- Those guides and newsletters come and go.
Yeah.
And, you know, we might produce one or we might participate in one, but we'll look for opportunities over the course of time. And we might want to be more general.
Okay, good idea.
Now that we've gone through these two, I just, it's funny, I think those two, 2.3 and 2.5 are very similar to 2.18. So maybe we figure out how to consolidate.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
You guys leave with 2.5?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the next one too, we combined 19 and 20, just added a few words and I don't know if you want to. I don't see any reason. It's really, we don't really maintain them, they're all outside ones, but at the same time. We don't really support, I think it might be more like maintain relationships or connections or something like that, rather than maintain.
I think that'd make a lot more sense, Ellen, rather than maintaining them, that means, makes it sound like we're in charge.
Yeah, and we're not, you're right.
And what you said, Dan, about, about the newsletter thing. Do we really need another newsletter? There are so many newsletters out there written by people who are doing whatever they want to do. And is there really the need for another one? And if somebody puts forth the effort and, you know, gets six hits a month, isn't hardly worth it.
You know, at the point where we have some, something available, say we get funds for. Tim Steber might have funds available for a BMP or something, you know, we might be able to just offer to write an article and piggyback on somebody else's newsletter once in a while. And that's what I mean, we can just look for opportunities to, to jump into a communication. I don't think we need to name them.
And you're absolutely right, Tim's mentioned how whenever the big national advertising comes out from USDA or something about new cover crop program, then, you know, they're trying to stay aware of that so they can be ready for anybody who walks in the door, because that big, they're doing that. It's like, sort of like being part of a chain of restaurants. When McDonald's does the advertising, the local guy's got to jump on board, so, kind of same thing.
You can always tell when there's a publication that's, a traditional publication that's trying to stay alive because they always put in bigger and bigger pictures.
Okay, guide and manage development, number three. And again, if you guys think of things as we keep going and you come up with some other ideas you might want to mention, just drop us an email, bring them up at the next meeting, anything like that's very welcome. Guide and manage, 3.1, establishing incentives, regulations to encourage development in existing areas and that are able to accommodate new development, such as zoning or density bonus in areas other than farmland preservation. So we have zoning, we have conservation design, we have farmland preservation tools. We have a few things out there. And then there are things that we thought we might do and as you can see, we're going to recommend deleting them. Transfer development rights, we've talked about this since our first meeting in April, that we tried to get some communities interested, we had one community interested in the city village that's, was totally not interested. So usually you're talking about a higher level community, a city or village, working with a lower density community and that's the concept of transfer development rights. That's the way it works out east, where it's been very popular and used very well. There is different structure out east where they have been able to use them. Counties are a lot more, have more authority. And towns have a lot less authority. Even in Minnesota, towns have a lot less authority than they do in Wisconsin. So the structure of our government sometimes dictates what we do and that has not worked so far in our county or in this area. 3.3, establish and make available zoning standards with 91, we've done that. Amend the ordinance, we've done that to, to, and we didn't even have to fight that battle ourselves because the state, when they created the farmland preservation regulations, they said that one of your districts shall prevent, or both of your districts have to prohibit major subdivisions if you're in farmland preservation zoning district. So that has been done and it's out of our control. The county will prohibit non-farm development on productive farmland in farmland preservation areas. So we've switched the terminology where respective towns will support it. So obviously what Jerry, you were saying early here, there is very productive farmland, for instance, in Richmond and in Hammond, and the towns don't support it. And there's even productive farmland in some areas where the town does support it and yet in other areas the town doesn't, so you've got that mixture, for example.
Ellen, could we go back just a second to 3.1? How does the county establish incentives? What, do we, do we give cash incentives?
No.
So, so should that word incentives just disappear?
Well, we have tried it to provide a density incentive instead. And by density, we also, and it did help, I think John could speak to this more than directly, but for instance, when we changed from a minimum lot size to a minimum density in our regulations, when we wrote the ag districts that it's two per 40, but that doesn't mean you have to have a 20 acre lot size. You can have one and, the one, one and a half, two acre, the, excuse me, two acre average, one and a half minimum and that's density. Took a while to get that all explained, but that tool has worked and has gotten more farmers interested in it. It's.
I just think when people see the word incentive, they're thinking of.
Money?
Cash.
Okay, so could we keep it but use a different word?
Yeah, that'd be fine, but I just think, let's, let's not make them think that we're giving out cash.
Okay, not use, absolutely. I do not want to make them think we're giving out cash.
County will establish non-cash incentive.
There you go, it might even be what we'll say. We do use occasionally related to the programs from the state, but those don't really change the pattern of development, the ones that Tim has in his, in his wheelhouse, so.
I think the biggest thing that had like an incentive program was the, when you're doing the cluster development or conservation design.
Mm-hmm.
And you get a, I think, what was it, a 10%?
Density bonus.
Density bonus.
Yeah. Yeah, it's higher than that. It's 25%.
Oh, 25%? Okay.
But that doesn't come from the county.
It's giving them permission to have additional lots that they wouldn't typically have under the current zoning.
But it's not cash, that's the thing. It's not cash, that's right.
Well, it could be money when you sell more lots.
It's the opportunity for money.
Well, you know, there's a lot of opportunities for money, but they aren't all considered incentives, you know?
Well, maybe not, okay. Incentive's not the right word, we're going to find it, and it will be a very different word, hopefully.
Out of 3.5.
Yes.
Is the word prohibit really the correct word there?
Well, it's strong, but then it's soft at the end, where the respective town will support it. If they support it, then we would literally prohibit it, so I guess, you know, we. There is a point where if you. If, if all of our things say will, like encourage, there's not much we can, you know.
If mom backs him up, dad will say no.
There you go, that's exactly right, yeah, exactly. We could put the wherever the respective town will support it at the beginning so that it's very clear, so it doesn't sound stronger than it truly is. We can reverse the preposition and the object.
That might be better.
Okay, that's a good idea.
Say, while you're changing that, Ellen.
Yeah.
You see, a little farther down that sense of development on productive farmland and that we're going to take out the next words, so we got farmland in farmland preservation. Can't we just say land in farmland preservation? Rather than farmland in farmland preservation? Because it is only farmland preservation.
Land in farmland preservation.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, yeah.
Thank you, those little things bug me.
Yep.
Just say the syllable when you can, that's what.
Mm-hmm.
If only one word, man, if you don't have room for one word, you have to have a page.
That's true. Next three.
Hate to waste pixels.
We've already amended the zoning ordinance regarding zoning standards for the districts we've created. We've already used the various tools to try to guide development and that has happened as part of assisting communities with their comp plans and with their own subdivision ordinances or other tools like that, that we've done over the years. It isn't that we will stop doing that, but I think those examples are out there and some of the far, towns have said, well, we want to do like our neighboring town does, we want to be the same, we don't want to be in conflict and so there are tools that have been picked up and others that have not. Multiple zoning districts, again, some of this I think was really overkill. And maybe we haven't even caught enough of them. 3.9, only commercial and thus clearly related to agriculture should be allowed in the farmland preservation area. And now at this point, we could reword this a little bit, but the reality is that actually is mostly what the state law requires us to do. It can be not related to agriculture, but it has to be subordinate to agriculture and it has to be that the majority of the land used is agriculture. So it is kind of clearly related to agriculture under state law. And then of course, the town does have to support it, I don't know, but if it already is in farmland preservation, the town already did support it, so that's kind of splitting hairs there. But these have, that, does that make sense, what I said? Probably doesn't.
No, not at all.
Okay.
It's too many syllables.
Okay.
We're trying to save on pixels. So I don't know that, I'm going to come back and argue about prohibit. I think sometimes prohibit's not a bad word. We just don't want non-farm development on productive farmland. If the, if the township agrees. We need to, we need to just put our little foot down sometimes. Because.
Turn this on, say this in a more delicate way. We need to preserve farmland preservation areas. And maybe that's a good way to say it, in the effort to preserve farmland preservation. Development will be prohibited with the support of townships. There, that softens it up without changing it a bit.
So you were talking about 3.5?
Isn't that what we're talking about?
Well, we were on 3.9, but that's okay.
Thanks for waking me up.
That's okay. We'll take a stab at rewriting that. And kind of go back to, in some ways they're very similar. Non-farm development, industrial development, the.
I'm very sorry, Ellen, I was still, I was still wrestling with that.
No, that's all right. Like I said, this is all about making sure you guys get your thoughts to us, so the thoughts got to come when they come. Yeah, so we'll take a stab at both of those, 3.9 and 3.5.
They should almost be blended together because it's just about the same thing.
It is, and at the time we thought it might be different, but now we could kind of go back to what the state law says and probably try to say it a little closer to what state law says too, another way to clean it up.
Isn't this the same thing that I was asking about before as far as definitions go? It is.
Right, but again, there's really not going to probably be definitions in the comp plan.
Right, I know, it's just.
Yeah, they're going to be in the zoning ordinance where this is implemented.
Right, and that's the same answer I got before, so I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, it's okay.
Refreshing my short-term memory.
3.10 I mentioned earlier, it's a tool, we can keep encouraging it. We can't, at this point, we don't have anything that requires anyone to do conservation design. It's all voluntary. So we can suggest it, we can encourage it. It's also a great way to protect our more sensitive resources, our water bodies, is to have conservation design as a buffer between more intense residential development, heavy highway use and more intense farmland. But we can't do anything but encourage it by providing. So one of the things we could do is going back to what maybe we should be doing, like a handout or a brochure or something, asking people to think about it. There's a lot of those at other levels of, but we can look for something and maybe focus it on St. Croix County, but.
Are there advantages to landowners to do conservation site design?
A lot of them, yes.
In terms, in terms of the value of the land, there are, there are advantages, right?
Absolutely.
And are there, sometimes, aren't there matching grants available for landowners?
No.
To put these in, there are not, through DAT cap?
No.
There are not?
One is that you're going to see this is, you're saying the farmland is one. You've seen it in productive forest land where, the deal is when people's properties are all outlined around a large parcel or the center, that land then stays permanently, this nice beautiful woods that they look out their back window. So it's like the perfect condition for the nimby's. They can buy a house in one of these types of developments and know that that property's never going to get redeveloped. So it has additional value to the people that live in those new homes that are being built in a conservation design. The other, the other is there is equestrian where there's a large farm, a horse farm, and they'll put houses around the perimeter and everybody owns houses or horses that are there and they have a co-op facility. So there's all different ways of doing it, even seeing one where it was an airport.
Think of golf course development.
Got it.
Exactly.
Private park, there's a couple and, at least one I could think of, and I think there's two or three in St. Joe where you're basically talking about a park, parkland that's, is lineal, it kind of winds. And that way there's a little piece of parkland, so there's a little bit of extra open space. They didn't do it as conservation design per se to get the bonus density. They simply did it as a developer because they knew it would increase the sales and they also looked at it and said, I can't build on this anyway. So I could put a little bit of it in each individual lot or I could make it a selling point by saying, hey, it's got this nice lineal walking path and it connects everybody to this nice, some beautiful slopes, some wildlife, some old growth trees, maybe some beautiful old maples or oaks or something, plus there's some water, there's some wetlands.
Sounds great, but I guess what I'm wondering is what's the incentive? How can we, how can we encourage, we can't really incentivize that, but how do we encourage it?
I was just saying, I think encouraging is done by documenting the possible greater value that can, of selling lots with that kind of approach. And I think there are people already doing it in this county, developers doing it in this county. They're just not using conservation design and asking for the higher density. They're simply recognizing the incredible topography that prevents them from developing anyway and they're making different, they're making a different choice.
Right.
I think the hardest thing, Dan, with it, that would be beneficial, that we have problems with is, as we've spoken in previous meetings, it's dealing with the wastewater management. As you, you know, you want to get these much smaller lots where they're not really sized appropriately to have a sewage privately owned wastewater treatment per lot. And then how do you do this where it's managed properly? And that's, that's the big deal that we need to work on if we want this to take off because right now that's been a stumbling block.
I get it. Okay, what's up?
Okay. Where am I? 3.11, conservancy efforts. We've seen that in the county again through the West Wisconsin Land Trust. Also, there's a couple other Kinney Kinnick Land Trusts, et cetera, and those have. We've referred people to them, we've talked to people about those organizations. It's not uncommon to have people contact our office and say, I need to develop, but. I love this, my grandfathers, my relatives, it's been in the family, we'd like to preserve some portion of it. And so we try to put them in touch with people that can help make that happen. So, that's basically what we're trying to do there. Support commercial and industrial land uses that are agriculture related and support local agriculture. I'm pretty sure there's nothing wrong with that statement, it's, you know, maybe. I'm pretty sure there's nothing wrong with that statement. It's, you know, maybe seems redundant, probably might be the way to say it, but we didn't suggest taking it out because it's, you know.
Shouldn't, shouldn't that be market-driven and we shouldn't, I don't see why we should have to put that in?
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Three thirteen, three point thirteen, evaluate and update as needed zoning standards. And that's a good example of that, has been discussions we've had lately, just based on the ag entertainment. And that's something John would address later. Because you need to always try to stay ahead of whatever the latest changes are in industry and practices and interests out there. Final page, seven point seven, thirteen point one, three point one four. If it's, we are, again, it's sort of stating it the opposite way as Brett pointed out, being very clear. Maybe we should combine that with the other one, just have them both all in one big sentence. That we will limit locations outside farmland preservation for commercial industrial land uses that are not clearly related to agriculture. And we will, and the other one is back over here, number three point nine. Nope, not that one. Well, it is kind of three point nine. So it seems to me like we should combine it with three point nine, and I think there's another one there. Isn't there, Brett? And you were looking, pointing that out earlier, so. Yep. And three point one five, it goes back to compatibility and the soils and adjacent land uses, which I think is a good policy to have in there because we've recently seen several activities. The wedding activity is one that just pops into mind where perhaps it's not as compatible with agriculture as, at least not when it's done more intensively. Maybe when it's done at a more, less intensive amount, perhaps it's a little more compatible. So there's a judgment calls that need to be made and they are probably, need to be revisited by elected officials such as yourselves.
Which one are you looking at?
Three point one five.
I agree then. I agree.
Yeah, I think kind of needs to stay in there because that compatibility is important. And also related to soils, which Jerry brought up earlier. Three point one six, ag entertainment will minimize impacts to adjacent properties related to excessive noise and light. So that was something that you guys brought up and asked us to look at. And I think John might, do you want to weigh in now or wait?
Well, really, all that policy does is it sets the table for us and the committee to look at amending the code. I mean, it's just saying that will minimize impacts, but you know, we're going to need to research that and look into that. But I think just that policy in and of itself supports that.
I was wondering, though, if it isn't too specific related to, will minimize impacts, if it might need to say in there right there at that point, such as noise and light to adjacent properties. And then keep it broader, so if another type of impact comes up in the future, this policy still supports. Okay.
Right. And also already, you know, it's the busyness of the roads and the non-safety factor of people driving.
What if it becomes popular to have fire truck parades or something?
Okay, so perhaps we could say something like noise, lights, road, noise, light, lighting, roads, et cetera.
Right.
To adjacent properties and keep it, it'll be the same length, it'll just be written a little bit differently.
Right. It's good to stay general in this document.
Yep. That's, policy should be. The natural resources, so we did change the wording on this slightly and say conserve natural resources related to agriculture. There is a whole natural resources section that talks about protecting natural resources. So this is mostly, it's like, why are we repeating ourselves? We asked ourselves, why is this in here when we have a natural, and so came back with that, that caveat. Best management practice to increase infiltration of stormwater runoff for groundwater recharge. Conservation programs and best management practices for agriculture uses that consume groundwater. Promote conservation programs, best management practice to reduce soil erosion. So you can see they really are all specific to agricultural activities. Conserve soil and water, reduce the use of pesticides. Encourage development and implementation of nutrient management plans to limit nutrient runoff and soil erosion. Participation in local, state, and federal conservation programs. Encourage cooperation between ag producers and the public and public agencies. I don't know if, based on the conversations we've just had, if you feel like there is a need for anything further related to energy. The impacts of alternative energy or more specifically bioenergy, is that something you'd like to say? Because basically, as you were mentioning, Dan, you, the negative impact it can have on our natural resources between phosphorus, surface water, nitrogen, groundwater. We would, again, it would be something like we'll promote or we'll encourage. Most of these are commer, well, they're all encourage or promote.
Is this where it would go?
This, well, it basically goes back to exactly what you said. Trying to, this would be a good spot for it because it's related to agriculture.
How did, how did we say that before? What?
What did you say before? You wouldn't happen to remember Nicole, do you, how he said that?
Nicole. Yeah. Closed loop, right.
Right, but no, I think Dan made, he kind of had a little, a little preposition to his statements about being very concerned about the impacts of.
Groundwater.
Impacts to groundwater and, and you said phosphorus and nitrogen.
I would like to use, I would like to, I put this kind of delicate, but to, to use, to use the resources that are produced in St. Croix County and not import nutrients from other counties. That was the emphasis that I was, that I was going toward. What are you thinking?
Right, right. The issue is when you say import the nutrients, what are you talking about? Nutrients is a broad term. Fertilizer that comes from.
It's poop in, poop out, man.
Yeah, but I'm talking about, how about commercial fertil, you know, say if it's poop in, poop out, say poop in, poop out. Because commercial fertilizer comes in from, you know, so you can't just say nutrients.
Nutrient's not the right word.
Right.
Right. If we're going to, in other words, let's just be.
We don't, we do not, right, you keep your. Yeah, there you go.
At home, right?
Right, so, yeah, we've got to come up with a different way of saying that.
Just to play devil's advocate on this.
Sure.
If there's a more larger digester in the northern side and somebody in Springfield on the county line wants to build one and there's somebody across the county line, now we're saying, that's not possible.
Right.
Well, I'm not saying that.
Right. No, I mean, coming up with a statement like that, we'd be saying, we can't import anything.
Well, Dan was talking about on farm. So what he was suggesting is whether it's like in Dane County where it's, Dane County where it's two or three farmers going together or it's one farmer, he was suggesting that it be related to the farm. And if a farmer wanted to go with a couple other farmers across the county line or if it's a farmer, a lot of our farmers own land across county line. That wouldn't, shouldn't be a problem. It's on farm, it's their farm. What he is suggesting is.
I don't, I don't want to get into a situation where we're importing more manure in St. Croix County than we, than we produce.
So is it something related to the large scale?
We don't, don't, do not want industrial scale production of methane in St. Croix County. Don't want to produce more methane in St. Croix County than we're going to use in St. Croix County. In other words, I don't want to produce methane in St. Croix County for the purpose of exporting it because that will have a negative impact on our groundwater. It's, it's demonstrated that our.
So that might not even go in the agricultural section, it might be in the natural resources.
That's where I'm talking about the definitions. We, we need to have a definition of, of the digestate as a, as an industrial byproduct is, because.
But it's not totally, you know, it's agricultural, not industrial. And we make a difference, we differentiate between that, which, but on a 5,000 cow farm, it's really the same thing, but we still, that's ag.
Well.
So, so again, that wording has to be.
Once, once it's been digested, it's an industrial byproduct. When it's coming in, it's, it's manure. When it's coming out, it's digestate. So.
But, but it's still, it's still an agricultural byproduct.
And it is.
Yeah.
And it could be used as fertilizer, right? But it's more fertilizer than we can use.
Right. I, I know what you mean. And I agree. We, we want to, we'll, we'll handle what's in here, but we're not going to handle what's out here and out here and out here.
Right. And if it's in a liquid form, if it has to be spread right now. If it's, if it's processed that you put in a warehouse, that's a whole different matter. But if it has to be processed, if it has to be spread.
Yeah. Ellen's idea, you know, you build an extra, extra space for that because it's going to have to come. That's the right way.
Except that it's very expensive to put it on the farmer. And I don't know if the farmers are going to agree to that. I have no idea. So far, we haven't, of the various proposals that have come across our desks or that we've observed in Roberts, there has not been very many farmers interested. There's basically been two. The person, the, a farmer who was kind of a real proponent of it, spoke highly of it. And another, and the interest from the turkey operations in Minnesota, Barron County, St. Croix County, that's now not operating, but from a wide variety of locations outside our county.
Right. And that's the issue.
Well, and it's, it's no, yeah, go ahead.
You say something to the effect of, import and export net neutral or?
Yeah, net neutral, that, that's a good, something built around net neutral.
Good, good term.
Yeah. Six in, six out.
Yeah.
But we need to, we need to codify that so that it's not, so that it's not a little game being played of, of somebody saying, oh, well, we can spread that, you've got plenty of ground to do that. We know we don't. And we know that we've got a lot of ground that we're talking about coming out of agricultural production over the next 20 years because it's good farmland, but it's all in, in.
In the wetland.
It's, it's all zoned so that it can be coming out. And then we've got a, a brand-new St. Croix River crossing, which has accommodated that. We're the fastest-growing county in the state and we know that people are going to be building houses on that farmland. So I think we need to, we need to make it clear that there has to be a plan that it has to go to the Board of Adjustment or Board of, BOA. It has to go to BOA. It has to be, the zoning has to be very, very clear so that each case is, is, needs a conditional use for it. It has to go there automatically. So that the zoning states that you have to have, what was the phrase that you used?
Neutral, net neutral.
Net neutral?
Yeah.
Right. Poop in, poop out.
Of course, now you have the developers looking to locate in villages and cities where the county does not have any approval jurisdiction. So Roberts, now they're in the city near Richmond, looking to propose a facility.
And that's another, that's another issue. It's going to impact the county whether or not they put it in a city or a village.
But they won't blame us for it.
Well, and the really tricky part is, is that we would not have a phosphorus concerns, which we have, and growing understanding of our nitrate concerns. And we wouldn't have the situation we do where the majority of our county has high levels of those nutrients that are causing problems with our water bodies. If we had a little better tools, perhaps at the state level, giving us more tools to regulate. You know, when you think about it, you guys have mentioned commercial fertilizer. Commercial fertilizer is happening in a lot of our county and where we're seeing nitrate problems. It's not just where, from animal agriculture. It's also from crop production. And that's what really scares us is what's to make sure that the appropriate amounts are applied. Fertilizer is obviously expensive, but apparently not expensive enough that it's not over-applied. And a lot of it is simply the weather. Farmers, you know, they apply it and it wasn't supposed to rain and then it does, so then they have to go and reapply it. But when it rained, where did it all go? You know.
Close to the river.
And that's.
You can combine, combine that with four point four. We talk about reduce the use of pesticides.
Yeah.
Maybe you just say in, in the use of pesticides and fertilizer.
Yeah. Good idea.
Well, if we're, I guess I'd like to see stronger language than encourage when we're talking about the net, net zero import of, of manure.
Yeah. I, I think that's got to be a whole new.
A whole new, right. We produce plenty of manure in St. Croix County. I don't want to see that.
I, I mean, we have to be sensitive to the fact that they have to deal with that. And, and it only includes other people's when, when a commercial entity gets involved because then they, they can pay for it. I'm not worried about three farmers that go together and pump their manure into the same pit and take care of it then.
Not at all.
It's when the commercial guy comes in and says, we need this and this and this, and then we can do this. It's 600 per week a day, right.
County-wide, you know, anybody can, these guys can do anything, is, you know, staying in the county.
Right. As long as they stay in the county.
Right. Or even if you've got a guy across the county line.
Yeah, I wouldn't worry about that.
That's, you know, it's in the neighborhood.
Right. It's still in and out, it's still neutral.
Right.
Well, and maybe there should be something, going back to what John said, maybe there should be something about asking after we get a, perhaps a really appropriate and acceptable policy or two written about going to our local municipalities and asking them to support us in that. To support the county's position on fertilizer and the net neutral and import, export of nutrients.
Asking the municipalities to add this to their comprehensive plans as well.
Yes. Like the municipalities are, in a way, have reached out to us on occasion and, and you guys have a policy we'll talk about in a second that you asked us to add to the natural resources section about wellhead protection. So by, it's sort of a two-way street. They want to protect their wells, they should help us protect the local wells too. Or.
It also protects their wells.
Yes, it also protects their wells. So it's, perhaps we need a policy of asking, that we hope this policy will be literally saying something, but we hope this policy will be adopted at the municipal level through, at, by every municipal, city, village, and town in St. Croix County. I don't think there's anything wrong with asking for it.
It's a very good idea.
Yeah. I, I think too, the net neutral thing, you know, we, we should have learned from the past when the junker landfill allowed 3M to dump all of their chemicals in there. We should have learned that, okay, we're only going to take chemicals in St. Croix County. So maybe then 3M would have moved 3M's home office to St. Croix County. Maybe not. But we could have dealt with it then, but, you know, I, I, we should have learned from that, so we really should think of that now.
Yeah.
Right. That's our job, is to think of the worst-case scenario and try to avoid it. So that the people sitting in these chairs in 30 years look back and say, gee, I'm glad that grandpa did the job he should, you know. So, and grandma. All right, so.
So that's the end of agriculture, unless any more thoughts?
I think we need to have sweatshirts made that say NIMBY.
I just have one more comment on the goal of, of goal four on page seven point four. Prevent soil loss. How do we prevent soil loss? We really don't cover it with blankets or?
We, no, we try to promote really hard cover crops and also, oh, now the terms just.
So let's provoke, let's promote it, let's not prevent it, okay?
Okay.
Promote. Not, don't promote soil loss, promote non-soil loss.
Promote, promote practices.
Yeah. Soil conservation practice, soil.
And that's what it does for, which one did you say you want to change?
Four three, four point three.
The county will promote conservation programs and best manage, reduce soil erosion and soil loss? That's what you're saying?
Right, but under your goal instead on page seven point four, that, that's what I'm pointing to.
Promote.
That there it says prevent.
Yeah, like, like no-till has been around for.
Right, but the county is, yeah, the county doesn't really, we, we promote it, we don't prevent it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. That's good. All right, where are we going?
We're going to just, Brett, can you hand out your copies? Yeah.
I had it on seven, seven, page seven, seven, three point one six. I know we hash that a lot, but.
Yeah.
Looking at it, you know, maybe on the legal terminology, you know, because we're talking about people's rights and stuff of quiet enjoyment and safety, because a lot of times the state uses that term. And it gives you a little bit more muster towards if we have to regulate. And it gives you a little bit more muster towards if we have to regulate it.
Okay, quiet enjoyment and safety, getting that terminology into that one, okay. Got it. So we're going to do this next one pretty quickly. We just felt it was appropriate to provide it to you. That, uh, we had gone over land use and we have gone over natural resources already. And actually, I think I'm out of order. No, I'm not. Transportation, I am out of order. Apologies to you, John. Okay, well, I will do this real quickly because this is going to be short, and then John's going to take over on a couple of things. In land use, I'm just going to, these have all the changes you asked so far, land use does, and so does natural resources. And it's so far. And, um, in land use, I, I think, um, you know, we rewrote 1.3 completely, maintain and promote the viability of agriculture in the county. Some of the others, there was some, some redundancy. I just really only wanted to call your attention to those where you specifically told us to write something brand new. On page, the second page of land use, 3.7, um, continue to cooperate with local communities to respect the adopted municipal plans and guide coordinated development throughout the county. So that's, was completely rewritten. If I jump down to, we've specifically on page 11, 19, or page three, 2.3, uh, we were very specific, and that was at our recommendation, to revise our non-metallic mining regulations to separate countywide reclamation standards into a separate ordinance applicable countywide as required by state statutes. And then our specific non-metallic mining regulations are done through our zoning ordinance, which is only applicable in, um, chapter, in towns under county zoning. So, uh, I don't know that we have to say that second part, but that's what that's about, um, if you might remember that. I don't think that, um, number 3.6 at the bottom of that page is a little bit new. Collaborate with cities, villages and towns on common land use and planning issues. Good statement there. And that was about all that was truly new. And the other ones, you're certainly welcome to look at, but we don't want to take the whole night. In natural resources, um, most of these changes are going to be as directed to be more related to what we've been doing with groundwater. So the very first one on the first page, objective 1.2, provide sound, science-based recommendations that protect the quality of groundwater supply that our county residents rely on for personal household use and consumption. And that, I believe, came right from, um, the group. And then on the next page, a couple of new ones related to that. 1.2, policy, encourage shared waste, I should say wastewater system, but that are managed by professionals and encourage new technologies and approaches that improve pollutant removal efficiency in wastewater. And then, um, 1.7, promote education and encourage, promote, educate and encourage the adoption of city-village wellhead protection ordinances and include them in county land use policies and regulations. Again, trying to coordinate and expand into areas you've asked us to. 1.8, expanding that statement to include springs and cold water streams. 1.9, increase awareness of activities impacting water quality by providing educational opportunities. 1.10, continue ongoing well testing programs to develop scientifically sound data that would support land use policy regulations for agricultural operations, wellwater and groundwater recharge zones. We're moving that other one to the utility and community facilities section. And then on the next page, 2.11 and 2.12, assist municipalities with adaptive management programs to meet surface water quality goals. Again, that's a program like, um, the city of New Richmond has looked into it, where they try to reduce phosphorus in the upper parts of the Willow River because they've run out of ideas to reduce phosphorus production within the village city limits. That's just a quick summary of what that could be. There are other ways to meet that also. 2.12, partner with, with and support lake districts and implementation of lake management plans. We've been doing that all along and just would continue to do that. Next page, well, actually, none of those are really that drastic. They're all pretty straightforward. And the last one on the last page, the very last one, evaluate large-scale renewable energy proposals for impacts to local surface and groundwater resources. Evaluate and require reclamation with financial guarantee for operations under 100 megawatts and request the Public Service Commission require reclamation, financial guarantee for operations of 100 megawatts or more. Again, directly from our discussions about non-metallic mining, renewable, and renewable energy, alternative energy. Because that's what we do in non-metallic mining, so. Any questions on any of these? Yep, go ahead.
So a bunch of years ago, back in the 70s, 80s, and I don't think it went into the 90s, the Federal Land Bank on any properties that they were re, um, getting back, reclaiming. They were, before they went to resell, they were re-deeding them, my understanding was, and I'm pretty, pretty sure of that, that they held all of the oil and mineral rights on all the deeds and, and currently have all these properties throughout all the counties in this area that they have retained oil and mineral rights. And wondering, um, the disposition of that and how that, how we would deal with that for the future under this, and who currently owns these things. Is the Federal Land Bank, I don't believe. I don't know if they still have that or not, or what they did.
Yeah, what, what Scott's talking about is after the Dust Bowl, there were massive quantities of, of basically taken by tax deed. Some counties created very, very large, large county forests, which are now, um, super popular recreation areas and provide a lot of, um, in those, some of those counties, huge amount of income. This county did not do very much of that. They got, sent, got it back into, um, public hands. But you're right, counties did to some, or state and federal government did retain rights. Brett, do you have anything you could add to that? Okay, you're right that they did. You basically, I believe, have to go back into all the old deeds and do a research project. And you're talking the deeds from not, I don't know if those are scanned in from the 30s and 40s, okay? Okay, which is great, when they, because, before we became a state even. But, um, ah, what that means and what would happen, I honestly have never heard of. Any other communities? John, have you heard of that? Nicole? Anybody, any place else they've worked? No? None of us have had to deal with that, so I'm sorry, we don't have any information for you.
Well, I'm just trying to think of the future and how this is going to impact us because these have all been pulled off from these people's deeds now.
Mm-hmm.
And they're, they're a saleable commodity. You know, people can purchase these from those entities that retain them. And my question is, how is that going to impact us? You know, we, I'm just trying to think of the future of how these things could impact us.
Well, don't you think that to a certain extent, there would be a conflict between, um, you own and live on the land, and Dan purchases the mineral rights. He doesn't really have the direct right to come in and start, um, mining it. When you own it for a specific use, you're farming it, you're living on it, you're, yeah. I think some people might say that's a personal property rights and the courts would have to get involved.
Yeah, but I'm thinking things like crack sand mining or, or, you know, where they, as they go down, and then they, they go out horizontally. And so they, they can impact people's wells, they can do all kinds of stuff. And if they own the legal right to do it, how is that, how is the, how are these things going to impact us?
Do we have any examples of that?
Not that I'm aware of.
I just know that this happened. I don't know, I haven't seen any repercussions or anything, but I'm just trying to think in advance.
Sounds like oil drilling.
Well, that's, that's one.
Sounds like South Dakota digging for gold, but that doesn't happen here.
Perhaps it's something where we would put a policy, I mean, I think back to the county zoning ordinance had, um, a P. Viner rule in it for decades upon decades. And we always said, why is this in here? And because it, you, for a short while, it was a very active activity in this county, and so it had a list of regulations related to P. Vining. And there was another one in the old, yes, yes, just don't ask. But there was another activity too that was in that. Perhaps it should be as simple as making it anything related to, um, mineral and other rights a conditional use so that if at some point in the future, there would at least be some opportunity to, um, sit down and, and offer some local, some county level. I have no idea. Maybe, I'm, I'm just throwing, I'm trying to brainstorm on the fly here and I have no idea what I'm saying, so. All right, we will see what we can think up. Okay, so, next, John is going to give you an update on our meeting with Robbie regarding the transportation section, and then he's going to move right into the follow-up from our last session regarding noise or nuisance ordinances.
I think the noise information we can send out by email. Instead of going through all that, so, transportation update I can give you real briefly. So on June 1st, um, our staff met with Robbie Creckie, the Highway Commissioner, to kind of walk through our transportation chapter, kind of like what we're doing here with the ag chapter. And we had a very good meeting, met for about an hour and a half or two. And kind of towards the end, Robbie just wanted to take the chance to take it back with him after our discussion and kind of tweak the policies. He feels he has the support of his transportation committee to kind of go through it. Some of his big priorities were to make sure that the objectives were clear for, um, programming and putting in place policies for grant applications, which he was very adamant about. There were also areas where he thought he could combine different objectives and then certainly cross some out as it related to the river crossing, cooperating with DOT on the efforts for transportation. So what he would like to do is tweak it, get it back to us. And then I think what we can do is get it back to the committee for you to review and then incorporate it into our final draft. At this point, I guess Robbie doesn't see a need for any committee meetings where he would come out or joint meetings of the transportation committee and our development committee. So that's kind of, uh, the premise that we're going to be going forward with, so.
I think, John, you should just, uh, give them a, two sentences about what we found out about noise nuisance, just, so that then when they're reading it, they understand the point, real quick.
Yep, so we did research regarding noise. We started at the local level, kind of worked our way up to the county and state level. So in St. Croix County, there are a number of towns that regulate noise. Star Prairie, Town of Star Prairie, Town of Somerset, Hudson have noise ordinances. The towns of Somerset and Hudson actually go so far as to include decibel levels. So I'm not sure how they administer that, if they have staff or if they have sheriff deputies do that. I'm not sure how that works, but they do have some very specific standards. The village of Somerset has a noise ordinance, cities of River Falls and Hudson, however, theirs is a more general. It does not fall under any zoning provisions. They're usually under public nuisance or health codes. So like in St. Croix County, for example, we have 35 chapters that make up our code of ordinances. None of them fall under zoning for any of the towns or villages. Let's see. St. Croix Public Health, we have chapter 42, St. Croix County Public Health. The Health Department goes with human health standards, which are defined as a substance, activity or condition that is known to have the potential to cause acute or chronic illness, endanger life to generate or spread infectious diseases or otherwise injure the health of the public. So whether or not noise really applies to any of those is questionable, so I'm not sure if our, even our own health ordinance of the county would cover that. There is one provision in statute that we reference as a county in chapter 52. It's under our law enforcement provisions. There's a statute 947 that's titled Crimes Against Public Peace. And that's really where the sheriff has the authority, like if somebody's having a loud party, they can go up to it, give them a warning, say, hey, quiet it down, or the next time we come back, we'll cite you. They can certainly do that based on statute. None of that requires a decibel reading, it's just more the, um, the interpretation of the officer at that time. We researched about a dozen other counties. None really have any specific noise ordinances relating to decibel levels. Much like St. Croix County, they reference the general statute 947, disturbing the peace. That's a very common provision that many counties have. I didn't find any that refined it or defined it any more than that. Let's see. Washington County, which is a suburb, or suburban county of Milwaukee, to the northwestern Milwaukee, they have a chapter in their code called Peace and Good Order. They regulate loud and unnecessary sounds, loud speakers or amplifiers, if it is plainly audible beyond the property line. So that's the one county that kind of takes that extra step and defines it as far as it being audible beyond the property line from which the noise is coming from, so.
And none of them are in zoning?
And none of them are in zoning. It's either public nuisance. Washington County, under the county health provisions, under the Peace and Good Order ordinance. It's one of their many ordinances within their title of codes. And again, it regulates loud and unnecessary sounds, loud speakers or amplifiers, if it is plainly audible beyond the property line.
I wonder if they've ever been to their own phone and care.
Yeah.
So what we kind of conclude from that is that, no, we can't have it in any one of our land use ordinances. It, it wouldn't be the authority of this committee or this department to put anything related to noise in. And it would be, you could go to the Public Protection Committee and have a general one that the sheriff would handle, or you could go to Health and Human Services and see if there's any route there, although we are not seeing that in other counties of the state. They would have to approach this from a different direction than noise regulation.
And based on our own chapters, and St. Croix County, again, chapter 52, under the law enforcement provisions, again, it's just that general violation against public peace, order and other interests. And that's where the officer can engage the perpetrators in determining whether or not, you know, it's violent, abusive, indecent, profane, boisterous or unreasonably loud, um, conduct.
But that does, that does already exist.
Yes, that's in our.
That the sheriff could administer that, you don't need to write anything new. You don't need a new ordinance, is what we're trying to say, if that's where you, the, we're just answering your questions about where could it come from under state statute legally. But not from, we only, in this department, have a very, a specific series of land use ordinances, a section of the law, if you will. And then we also have, um, solid waste and recycling, which is related, because again, it's on the land and that we don't regulate people's personal activities except as the law allows.
So if somebody had enough land to put in something like a, a go-kart, race car, uh, track and, and monetize that, and it became popular, but it was terribly noisy, we are leaving ourselves in the point where we wouldn't be able to prohibit that.
Well, it, we would, depends, okay, so say it was, that kind of a thing is probably not a permitted use. Some kind of a racetrack is probably a conditional use or something. So then it would go to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment could put regulate, could put conditions upon their operation. One of them, I don't know if they could say something like, you can't disturb the peace. I don't know if they could do that.
Perhaps it's the example, the example, I'm coming up, I'm trying to come up with an example which would meet all other, all other permitted uses except the noise. So suppose there's something that meets all other permitted uses except it's just incredibly noisy. I would like to have some way to take the, the noise which disturbs the peace, that it would be something that none of us would want to tolerate and, and have a way to be able to say, wait a minute. It's great that you, you know, that you want to do this business, but it's just not going to fit with what's happening here is that we've become a residential community.
Adjoining land uses are not appropriate. Adjoining land uses are not appropriate.
Right. It's, and maybe the go-kart racing isn't the right, isn't the right example, but there has to be something else, you know.
Well, I can give you two examples historically in the county that I can think of. There was people who have motor, a little dirt bike. That's where I want, dirt bike. Maybe they moved out into the country, and they had enough acreage, and their kids are using a dirt bike track. And if you've ever heard of dirt bike, you know, they can be very loud with a whine and a vrrrr that's, I'd get it's even begin to get. So we had that, we had numerous complaints. People so unhappy, we had nothing against dirt bikes. They could have that. They were on quite a bit of land, but it's still, the sound carried, it's very hard. We could not do anything about it. Eventually, the one family moved away, and someone who liked dirt bikes moved in next door. And then the kids got a little older, and it all went away, miserable for a few years.
But under our current ordinances, our zoning ordinances, anything related to outdoor recreation uses or outdoor entertainment activities are regulated by a conditional use permit, which means they have to go to the Board of Adjustment, and then the board takes testimony and may attach reasonable conditions to minimize that impact.
Correct. But if it's for their own personal use, because we had that also, where someone was inviting, again, the dirt bike type thing, and they were inviting other people, and then they thought, "Hey, let's charge a fee."
Well, if it's ten or more, anything, if it's ten or more people going to that activity, it's subject to the conditional use.
Right. And so we were able to stop that, but we couldn't stop the individual family members.
Oh, yeah.
Doing that. And that was just as loud. Another example is, Scott's very aware of this one, Cedar Speedway, and the indoor operation, I don't remember what, anyway, it's an indoor racetrack. Perhaps it wasn't built very well. I don't know. But they did put noise, the Board of Adjustment did put noise standards on it, at the property line. And our department was charged with trying to police that. That was a nightmare, and we finally got them to remove those standards because that was so impractical to enforce. We didn't have really high-quality meters. By the time we got there, after we got complaints, there was no noise. Even when there was noise, and we got there, and they were operating, you could not prove that when you were standing at the property line, where it for sure was coming from. There's also highway noise in that area. There were other things. It was a nightmare. We could not make anything sick, could not make it work, and it was impractical. Noise is a very hard thing to regulate. It needs to come from, I would guess I would say it this way, I think the reason it's in the sheriff's authority is because it needs someone at that level of authority to regulate, not a zoning or community development department.
All right, so I guess it's like pornography, you know it when you see it, but you just can't regulate it.
Well, it's.
The other two I just want to bring up too, that are, the Speedway is an obvious one. We have problems with the Speedway for years and years, and that's going to be there forever. Matter of fact, any new developments that go in around the Speedway, we actually make the developer place notes on the deeds that there's a Speedway here, and you can expect on race, you know, during certain times, there's going to be this, just to try to eliminate the legal lawsuits against the Speedway. But those are just two, and the one that you were talking about, the other problem with that facility is that the exhaust system fans they put in are terribly noisy. They would actually, the people's homes that were near it would actually, they had a ren, a resonance coming from the fans where the houses would vibrate. And so their houses have this continuous vibration during the entire days while these fans were in operation. And a matter of fact, we had the exact same type of issue back when they used to have the facility out by the health center that, where they burnt all the garbage. They also had huge fans that operated there and mechanicals, and that would go for miles out into the township and cause where we had complaints at the township level. So the noise is a factor, and it is something that I think we need to think about how to address for the future, because these types of businesses come in, and, and, you know, if we aren't addressing these on the construction side of it, it becomes nightmarish afterwards to try to remedy the problems.
And that means it's a partnership? Because the towns have building permit authority, and that barriers or putting a standard in, as staff have talked about, if something about noise baffling, or what's the term you use, John?
Sound attenuation.
Sound attenuation can be put into our ordinances to say that that should be handled, but the actual construction of it needs to come from that building permit, I would believe, not us. We don't have as much authority there, tiny, tiny bit related to things. And then there's a few other things we could do, and John has a handout he'll send to you, probably more efficient that way. And we can also look at the basic better approach, and John, I don't know if you said this or not, is ask yourselves, are these uses appropriate in the rural areas? I mean, if, if, we all know that there are great places and great opportunities, the Dells, where you go and you do bumper cars, or you do little speedways, and they're in multiple, I've been to them, they're a blast. They're a lot of fun. They belong in certain areas, but not perhaps everywhere. And so perhaps there are uses we should limit where they're allowed, with, we're allowed by the state to do so, of course, that are noisier. And so sometimes it's backing up and looking at our zoning ordinance and using the concept of zoning that separates uses that are incompatible with residential, or even, you know, other things, commercial.
The people who fought the, the wind farm up in Forest fought with noise, and they fought with, with that same thing. And I, that was one of the factors that, that made the company decide not to build there. But, but that too is another noise that we should somehow work in the zoning, that, that certainly makes noise. The noise, the vibration that you talked about, you know, depending on, on the humidity and the weather, miles away. And so I, I think we have to address it somehow. I think we have to put something in, and that, that does denote that.
You have to, you have to have a, some kind of an agreement with the Public Protection, because they're the only ones that are going to enforce it, unless we get it enforced on the front side.
I think it goes beyond Public Protection too, that the Sheriff's Department has to be on board, and they're awful busy. That noise is just a sticky, sticky, sticky deal. And I think the, the real trouble comes when country meets town, you know, you get that town and, town and country deal going. And ag entertainment is where this whole thing began, this, this whole conversation. So come back down to how we reconsider our ag entertainment ordinance, and we're limited by the state, so we'll have to visit that again another day.
Food for thought.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much, John. It's excellent. Yeah.
I got an email today, which I just opened, from Bill Rubin about us, and maybe you read it, deleting two-point-one-four. The county will work with St. Croix Development Corporation and other economic development agencies to implement economic development programs that will support agriculture and related businesses. And his group is asking us not to do that, that they may remain in the policy. If I remember, I didn't, wasn't there something else that said that same thing about a page away?
And it, basically, like I said, I don't know that we need to work with them. It feels like that is their role. If that's part of their role, I guess I'd like to know more about what they've done, going back to how we ask ourselves, what have we done, and have we accomplished the things in here, and if we haven't? Yes.
Right. I think what we do is, we encourage, we encourage community members to seek funding, you know, available, all available funding. I think the way we word that is that we encourage, we promote all available funding sources. I don't think we need to name any agency, because agencies will change. Available funding sources will change. And I think we leave agencies out. The revolving loan fund will probably be there, but we're not, I don't think it's necessary to name it. If we refer somebody to St. Croix Economic Development, that's fine. If we refer somebody to another agency, that's fine too. I don't think we need to name an agency. So we can, we can leave that there, or we can drop it as is recommended. But it would be good to say that we're going to refer to available funding sources. That's probably the best way to handle it. Bill's probably right. We should say that we have a commitment to referring to available funding sources. That's my opinion. But I wouldn't, we're not recommending other nonprofit organizations. We're not recommending any other funding sources or organizations. We're not recommending any other, any other funding sources. We decided to not recommend or name UW Extension in, in other areas. I think we're going to be best off not naming any organization in a, in a ten-year plan. Just, let's just go with the concept and, and stay that way.
Does that mean, Dan, we should keep that in there, except just say, "Economic Development Agencies," which would be a blanket for any economic development agency that we might choose to use?
I think economic development, the concept doesn't, this is an agricultural part, this chap, you know, part of our comprehensive plan. So economic development itself tends to refer to other aspects of the community. Agricultural, the agricultural community, when they're looking for financing, are looking for USDA loans, they're looking for other types of bank loans. If they tend to come to the county and say, "Hey, where can I get financing?" I'm not sure that they're looking for economic development loans. If they are, we can certainly steer them in that direction, but it, it seems incongruent to me. We, we can just say we'll help them find what available financing is appropriate if they, if they're looking for it. Economic development is a, it seems incongruent to be in the agricultural section.
I've read this a few times, and I think where they're trying to go is that businesses that support agriculture, so you're not talking about the farmer, you're talking about the, the equipment supplier, or the dealer, or something like that.
Mechanic, whatever.
Mechanic, or whatnot. I think, I think that's where they're kind of going with this, is where, what I see, but.
And again, that doesn't have, it, it seems, it doesn't seem consistent with the, the agricultural land use nature of what we're doing with that chapter. But if, if that's what we want to do, if we want to, if we want to talk about finding funding sources, we should do it, but we can, we can do it without naming agencies. We can say that we will help find funding sources without naming agencies. We don't need to name St. Croix County Economic Development or any other agency. We can say that we can help find available funding sources, because those funding sources change.
Do you advise to support all available funding sources and programs that support agriculture and agriculture-related businesses?
That might be good.
Yeah. Keep in mind too, for the committee, you know, we're just meeting with you to talk about the four priority chapters, transportation, land use, ag, natural resources. We have an economic development chapter within the comp plan that talks about a wide range of policies and objectives, and, you know, I think cover other components of economic development. So just keep that in mind. We have a whole nother chapter that addresses economic development.
I think we've, we've broadened the scope of what agricultural entities are. I mean, when it includes wedding venues, to me, that's a big stretch, and, and that might be where this, something like this fits in. I mean, agriculture now can mean whatever we want it to mean the way it seems. And then maybe we should look at agriculture as with planting and harvesting instead of dancing and breweries.
Well, keep in mind, again, the ag districts we have, our zoning districts, they're certified by the state, because we have property owners that are eligible for tax credits in participating towns. And the way statute is defined, you know, agriculture accessory uses includes activities or businesses as part of the farm, or a business, whether or not associated with an agricultural use or not, that is conducted by the owner of the farm and employs no more than four full-time employees. So whether or not we agree that ag entertainment uses should be in the code, we believe it needs to be in the code to be consistent with statute. The question is how we deal with those uses. And one of the things that we can talk about, ag entertainment, you, you heard this at some of our rezoning presentations, the threshold for a conditional use permit is fifteen events per year. And I think those are some of the comments we heard, that that's a high number. Well, maybe the committee starts talking about lowering that threshold. That is something we could do. So I think there are other avenues available to kind of address some of those concerns, and maybe those are for future discussions.
Yeah, we should, we should put that discussion off. How late are we scheduled for tonight?
Well, I don't mean tonight, but.
Seven.
Seven, yeah. Let's, let's, let's put that, let's put that off, and, and put a bookmark there. And I have a couple of distinct ideas that I want to bring up for that too, and, and put a hold. Jerry, did we address what you wanted to talk about with regard to that economic?
I'm just, just saying what, what Bill asked us to, to consider, so.
Yeah, I, I.
And, and, yeah, I think so. I think this, this whole idea of what it should be, and, like John said, we do need to have a talk about fifteen and the numbers and things like that.
Right.
Because I, I think we need to change things again. But if we use your, John, your explanation of what all is tied in with agricultural business now, then the economic development corporation enters in more rather than less, because those are things that they could promote.
Possibly, yeah.
I think we have to remember that the state did try to keep it, like we said at the beginning, there's that one statement about it being very subordinate, very subordinate to agriculture. And perhaps we need to go back, as John has just suggested, to reducing it to being more subordinate to ag. And if you think about it too, only having up to four full-time employees, if you, seasonally, then you can have more. But again, there's just, there's ways to talk about this, and as, I'm sure, as Dan says, he has lots of some ideas. I think we need to really look hard at exactly what we have to do, and remember that it is supposed to be very subordinate to agriculture, because the only reason the state wrote this is that they felt that little extra businesses on the farm would help keep ag, land in agriculture, and farmers in farming. And so we don't want it, I even questioned, well, why is there, okay, there's a little bit of land that's being used for ag entertainment. What's it subordinate to as the main agricultural use? And I think that goes back to what Jerry just said. Ag entertainment is not the primary use, it's supposed to be a subordinate use. And I think we've lost that in some of what people are bringing to us, and how small of a property. I think we've lost that in some of what people are bringing to us, and how small of a property it can be on. So it's something to talk about, ideas, doesn't mean that any of them will be used, but yeah.
The thing that I want to add is its proximity to residential housing.
Yes, very important.
And in the comprehensive plan, the proximity to residential housing should be a trigger for a conditional use.
Could also look at minimum parcel size. Ag too, you know, it's a twenty acre, I mean, we can do research on that, but that's another factor.
Because a large. Size would provide greater separation, so if you had a bigger larso that it had to be on, then there's separation from the neighbors too, whatever it might be, you're okay with allowing.
Right, and then just to back up, to, with regard to Bill's request, it's not up to this committee to send business to Bill, we don't, right?
As John described what, what actually it can be, it really does send business to Bill.
Then that needs to be done organically, we don't need to put that in the comprehensive plan.
For the record, could, if it's, unless you feel like you can't, but because it was brought up in the meeting, could we have a copy of the email for the record, for the minutes, or something?
I just figured everybody got one.
Perhaps it was sent to all the committee members.
The committee members, yeah.
Yeah, so whoever is willing to do that, Dan, that'd be fine.
I'll forward it to you.
You'll do it.
Yeah, I'll do it right now.
Okay.
And that being the case, so does anybody have anything else to say, except good night?
Thank you very much, this is really, again, it's a great, excellent session, very productive.